Recording has started. Everyone should be joining momentarily.
Welcome, everyone. Thanks for your patience. Sorry, I have a dog here. Go on. We'll start the meeting. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called to order. May we have roll call, please?
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Maybe?
Present.
Commissioner Newt?
Here. And Commissioner Friedman is attempting to sign in. Next on our agenda, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Next, we have public comment. Please state your name and add your and be reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control, direction, and advisory power. Please state your name and address.
Hello.
Hello?
Hello.
Go ahead. State your name and address.
Mel Friedman.
Oh, hi, Mel.
Okay, I finally got it this way. We're trying to get the other way, but we're still working on it.
All right.
Because I can hear you.
Mel is now in
Yeah, I've got stores that just walked in the door. My son-in-law.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
So he's trying to get a picture.
I see that Patricia is trying to get audio. Any public comments?
She's muted right now, but if you want to.
Patricia, do you have public comment?
No, I just got in. I'm just catching up with the meeting.
Okay, we're at public comments. So if you have public comments, now is the time.
On what?
Just general public.
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we will move on to consent items. Do we have a motion from on consent items A through F or any that you would like pulled for consideration?
I make a motion to approve consent items A through F.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Freeman, or sorry, Maybe. Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
For.
Commissioner Friedman?
Here.
Commissioner Maybe?
For.
Commissioner Newt?
For.
For. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have one proclamation, the 2020 National Public Works Week proclamation. Sorry, I have to scroll to get to it. There's a lot in between. All right, thanks for your patience. The 2020 National Public Works Week proclamation, May 17 through 23, 2020. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Livingston, Montana. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could be, could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the public sector, who are responsible for rebuilding and improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supplies, supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children living in St. Montana to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Darrell Hoagland, Chair of the Livingston City Commission, to hereby proclaim May 17 through 23, 2020, as National Public Works Week. Further, I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life dated this 5th day of May in the year 2020. All right, thank you. I have to scroll all the way back. Okay, tonight, we have no scheduled public comment, no public hearings, no ordinances. We do have one resolution, Resolution Number 4895, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign and submit a TSEP grant application with the Montana Department of Commerce for construction of a sanitary sewer service line for the Livingston Civic Center and Parks. Mr. Carduce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is not a new project. It's just a hasn't been project that's been funded up until this point. And this is a request to the Department of Commerce through the Treasure State Endowment Program for a grant to help us with the construction of hooking the Civic Center and parts of Stackidge Wea Park to our current sanitary sewer system. That would take place through what's currently our number-one ball field there, through the school parking lot, and then hooked up to River Road out there. So that would be kind of be the scope of the project. This is most likely a 50% match as far as the city's financial contribution goes. So basically, it will cut the cost of the project in half. This is a project that needs to be completed regardless of whether any more construction happens at the current Civic Center. With the amount of users we have at the Civic Center, usually during basketball season, not so much this year, and in areas such as skate night or even just some of the rec programs like Wiggly Wednesdays, it's a pretty heavily-used area, and that is currently all on the septic system, which no one knows for sure exactly when it was built or that it's actually operational. We just know that it doesn't plug at this point. So this is a fairly important program, and this is a good opportunity to, for the state to help us fund that. We're currently in the process of getting some letters of support from organizations around town, and that will include in the, in the package that goes up to TSEP. But in general, it's a great project, and if we can get some grant funding from the state, it'll certainly cut down on the cost.
All right, great. Let's open it to public comment and then Commissioner comment. Any public comment on our resolution? I'm sorry, Resolution 4895. Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I would just like to say it's a long time in coming and really, really needs to be done. Which is obvious. All I have to say.
I was wondering, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Warren.
With the Second Street project, and if this does wind up roughly 50% our costs, and with the economy, the way it's been hit, how will that impact or the taxpayer?
So the total cost of this project, if the grant is received, is right around the $315,000 range. If in this case, that will be funded through the sewer fund, most of the Second Street project is not sewer-related. There's very little sewer work to be accomplished in that section of Second Street. So it won't touch the same funds. Most of the funding for the Second Street project is either through streets, gas tax, or there are some URA funds as well that will be used for some sidewalk portions. Most of that has already been budgeted. It shouldn't be a, any additional cost to the taxpayer, and certainly wouldn't be any additional levy as far as any taxes go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Michael, can I ask a question? Can you describe the project and where does it hook up? So where are we starting the system to, is it coming off of Second Street, or can you give us a detail of that? And then how it's utilized for the park, the Civic Center, et cetera?
Sure. So this will actually hook into the sewer system in front of the school. So if you go from the Civic Center through the school parking lot, through the high school parking lot, out to the road there, that will actually be where it connects into the system. The reason for that is trying to go to Second Street, you have to go under Fleishman Creek in that area, so that becomes kind of expensive to try. You have to, it ends up being a forced main, has to be pumped. Additionally, we're not sure how far under Fleishman Creek you would have to go to bore it to get it to the system in that, in that spot. So even though it's a longer distance, it's less expensive to go through the school parking lot and out to the main road. So that's where it would hook in. So it would come back through that area, and would then come back in basically just south of the skate park. So it'd go through the ballpark there. There may be an opportunity to hook the ballpark restroom facilities to that sewer as well at that point, but then go into the main sewer for the Civic Center. So then the Civic Center would be attached to that sewer main, and then we could extend it beyond, and these are some bid alternatives for the project, but the initial plan is to extend it beyond into the park on the other side there and have, if we have any restroom facilities in that area, we currently have vault toilets there, we could actually hook that up to the sewer system as well and get rid of those vault toilets, and it could be run across the road into the main part of Stackidge Wea Park, where we could also switch any facilities over to the sewer system instead of having vault toilets anywhere in that area that close to the river.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Melissa.
Thanks. I, um, I was hoping you could remind us, Michael, what the status is of the current system. The vault toilets are obviously vault toilets, but the Civic Center is on a septic tank, I think.
It is on a septic system. It's hard to give you the status because no one knows for sure when it was built. It might be original to the building. It might have been part of the original construction. Either way, the septic tank is working in the fact that it hasn't backed up. It continues to at least service. We're pretty sure that the drain field from the septic tank runs out the south side of the Civic Center towards the river. So the drain field for that septic system is between the river and the Civic Center. It's unlikely that the drain field is still in good condition, if it's even serviceable at all. So it's most likely that most of that sewage is just being washed away under the river. The, the water table there is fairly high, so it's just, it's really just soaking right into what's the extended river at that point.
Can I ask a question, Melissa, after that? Are you done? Have we had our tested water in that area near the river during maybe low water seasons?
There's not really any wells in that area to test. We'd have to drill some test wells. And honestly, with the rate of flow that there is there underneath that part of the, you know, what used to be an island, basically, it's not, we're not going to find anything in any testing. It's just being washed directly through the groundwater and out into the river.
Yeah, quickly. Okay. So I'm going to also state, like Quentin did, that we've been talking about this for a long time and the importance of replacing, or actually not replacing, but putting in the lines to the Civic Center because of, number one, it's used, it's used often as well as the danger to the river and with the septic. So I'm excited to see that we have potential to move forward if we get this grant.
Darrell?
Yep, go ahead, Mel.
There's a pool on the east side of the building, the Civic Center. Is that one of the problems? There's always water on the, on that side between the bandstand and that side that faces the bandstand. Every time you go by, there is a pool, pool of water. Is that part of the problem?
It isn't part, well, yes, it is. It's really, it just shows how high the groundwater is there, that, you know, that area is, is constantly being inundated by water, whether it's, you know, more so during high, during the high times of, high water times of the river. But that's, it just shows that doing a septic system in that area is just not that feasible if you're really worried about contaminating the river.
I was going to suggest we put the swimming pool on that side for the summer, so I don't know if that'll work.
We'd have to dig it out a little.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Do we have a motion from the Commission on Resolution Number 48? Sorry, lost the number. 95.
Make a motion. We passed Resolution 4895.
Second.
By Friedman and second by Newt. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
For.
Commissioner Friedman?
For.
Commissioner Maybe?
For.
Commissioner Newt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to action terms, we have no action items tonight. And next is our city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I don't have much for this evening. Hopefully, you've been following along on Facebook for our informational series this week. I think there's some good info out there on some of the COVID-19 data. It's not really on any of the restrictions or actions you need to take. It's just some of the background information for people to have so they can kind of see it in a, an easier-to-read format. Additionally, we're still, I'm waiting to hear some of the results of the initial boards for the small business loans from the revolving loan fund. I know they're getting close to awarding the first batch of those, so that's a great step forward as far as that goes. The first week of city operations has gone well. We're not, it's not heavily traveled. There are not a ton of users of city services, but there are some, and that's gone fairly well. I think we have some pretty good setups. If you have time to stop in the finance office, you can see how that's, how that's working right now, but it seems to be working both for the employees and for the customers. Other than that, I just have a couple of questions for you as a commission that you can talk about after your comments. One, how we want to move forward with boards and committees. With the current status being that you can meet in groups up to 10, we might be able to allow the boards to meet again with limiting public participation, if they can allow it through some other means, either through Zoom meetings like this or other options. That's one question for you. And then the last one is just to reschedule any listening sessions for the month, depending on what your user on that. That is all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. Um, I have thoughts on the board meetings. I think one of the other options is that we could have boards gather with some participation by Zoom and some by live, where then we open up public access as well, maybe a few seats to public. So, you know, where someone, a board member could call in or Zoom in just for having more public access. I don't know what you guys think.
I think the one issue with public access, we have to determine the amount of people allowed in the room, and then not to discriminate against anybody, but it should be a first-come, first-served basis. Unless somebody has a better way of allowing that access.
First come, first served to the public?
Yeah, as far as being of public participation and how do we limit those numbers to, you know, like the planning board or something, you know, 10, you know, X amount of seats, you know, we need to have X amount of seats and better up that way and first come, first served.
When does the 10 number, or the total number of 10 change? Phase three?
Phase two. So once it goes to phase two, the congregation limit is groups of 50.
Oh, yes. Okay. Is there a timeline on that yet?
The governor hasn't provided any timeline as far as when we'll move from face to face.
I yield to Melissa. She's got her hand up.
Go ahead. I can't see everyone. For some reason, it changed my screen. Changed to who? There we go. Now I can get you all back. Go ahead, Melissa.
I was just thinking, the planning board, and this is, I'll ask questions too when I get to the comment period for myself, but, um, the next big thing for the planning board is to start to interact with the public for the different drafts. So I think it's going to be pretty problematic if we're, the whole, the whole COVID is problematic, obviously, but it's going to make it extra challenging for the planning board for public participation because it's going to be one of the most important times for public participation is going to be the review process. So I'm leery about how we talk about first come, first served, and then those citizens would somehow have time to go home and log on after the meeting started. I'm also wondering, what does that look like? Is there going to be a contractor there when the public meetings are happening at the planning board? I don't have that information, so I don't know, but the planning board's already at seven people, assuming they all show up. So I think it could be, the planning board has a meeting at the end of this month. I think it might be nice for the chair to be involved in the conversation. He is an IT person, Brian, and also give the planning board, I guess, some time to figure out how they're going to make public participation work because there were a lot of ideas floating around before the pandemic. Yeah. And it seems like the timeline's still on track with the contractors. So in some ways, I think online would be easier because we're, we don't know the health status of all of our board members. I mean, it's impossible, and it's not my business to know if somebody's high risk or not with their personal health concerns. But I think in phase one, if you have certain health risks, it's recommended that you don't congregate. So it's just another layer to consider. I don't want people to feel pressured to have to show up in person when we know the growth policy is important.
That's why I brought, brought a planning board because that's the most active board right now. You know, how do we do that?
Well, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to hear some feedback from Michael about how it's working for the conservation board. They've been continuing to meet, they've been continuing to meet remotely during this time, and it sounds like they're getting work done. So I'd like to hear if we have any information about how that's being received by the public, if the public's able to participate or do you know, Michael?
So as far as the conservation board goes, they have been continuing to meet, and I think it has been working fairly well. Their chair is also highly familiar with Zoom and I think is able to, to run that really well, which is great. I'm not sure all the boards would be able to have that level of technical competency to make it work that smoothly. So we'd have to find some other method as far as that goes. It's certainly easier to, for any of the boards to meet completely by Zoom than by half Zoom, half in person. That gets to be pretty complicated as far as who can you see in the room, who can't you see, how do you mute the room, or how do you mute everybody else? It gets, it gets kind of, kind of sticky if you're trying to merge types of meetings. So it'd probably be either teleconference only, which would be, at least then everyone could hear. But those are the options we have to work through, and whether or not we want to try and meet that way or just wait for phase two. I think that's probably the biggest question is do we want to try and continue to meet in the interim, or do we want to wait for phase two so that boards can meet in person?
Well, I have another idea, Darrell. For the planning board, one option would be also hearing Michael's input would be to have a combination, not at the same time, but at different times. So having more than one meeting for the public, for example, about the growth policy and having Zoom, I think Zoom can be, I don't know what count the city has, but I'm guessing it's at least one to two people potentially could call in. And maybe having like some sort of written component also where people could submit comments and feedback to the board. And then doing, it would mean that when the board reviews comments, that it would have to be more formal laid out in a spreadsheet, which might be the most appropriate way to go through public comment anyway for the review process of the growth policy. But that could be a way to keep things moving forward, but meeting the needs of different people in the community is have more than one. It's not just like one shot and you're done. Does that make sense?
Well, and I've seen successful meetings of 100 people. And, you know, it's possible. And they could continue with a Zoom meeting for the first, first couple and decide, I think it's partly the board's responsibility to consider what the board would like to do. So I think presenting it as a board, as the agenda, or one of the main agenda items for the next meeting, how do we move forward, basing our response on the phases and going from that. But it's possible to have 100 people call in. And that's great. No, for now.
I think Brian, I think Brian might have those. I think he might have the, some of the skill set necessary to, I think he's an IT person, and I'm sure he's doing these kinds of conferences like the rest of us. So I think he would, it would be good to have a conversation with him, like you said, at the next meeting and see what's the possibility and capability of our board.
So, um, I think when the, each of the boards start to kind of work through next steps, especially for this month, they can consider how they're going to provide public access to the, to the meeting. So is that enough information for us to move forward on the, at least on the boards? So is that enough information for us to move forward on the, at least on the boards?
We can, yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to the boards and see if they have what their preferences.
Yeah, especially for this first phase. You know, before we move to the bigger numbers or when, when that may happen.
And also capabilities, Michael. Like I would be curious to know if there's some boards that don't have a full agenda and no one is feeling like they have the skills to run a Zoom meeting. I don't want, that's important information to know. Because every board's going to have sort of a different load. Does that make sense?
What do you think, Michael?
Yeah, I think it's absolutely going to depend on the boards and what they're comfortable with. You know, and it's going to vary significantly from board to board. But that's, I don't think that's a problem. We just can do what we can do and we'll move forward that way. As far as the planning board goes and well, and as far as the growth policy goes, I'm having a meeting tomorrow with our contractor. And we'll have a better idea of where they are and how they would like to move forward at that point.
Well, and can they help with the meeting platform? I mean, they probably have had to do that other places now in coming up with solutions, so.
Yeah, we can see what they've been doing and what their ideas are as well.
Great. Okay, what was your second part of your question, Michael?
I was just scheduling for listening sessions. If you wanted to try and go forward with any of those or if you wanted to cancel for the month.
Um.
If I can chime in real quick. I did cancel the one at the, at Loves and Fishes for this month, which would be the Saturday. But I still cook there once a month and we're not seeing people for dinner anyway. So, and the last one, only one person showed up and that was me. So I think at this time I would just put them on hold.
I was at the last one, but you had already left, FYI.
Okay, good girl. But I mean, we can schedule it, I suppose.
I think it's okay to wait.
Yeah, I think it's soon wait until we get into the next phase.
Definitely.
Throw it cut out for me when you were talking. Can you please repeat what you said?
Me? Melissa? Yeah. I just said I was at the next, or the last listening session, but Quentin had already left and I came in. All I said.
Did you say something about the next phase?
Oh, that waiting for the next phase, some, which, you know, thinking ahead to next month at least. For the next.
Thank you.
So thinking a little outside the box, if you'd like, depending on, on your schedules, we could actually set up a listening session via Zoom. Just to have people call in and chat if they wanted. We can do it anytime, place, whatever. We could just schedule it for you. If you're interested, but that's just a different option.
I like that idea. I mean, Zoom's not our, obviously not the best platform overall. It's just not that easy a lot of times for people. But I think at least having a face to face through Zoom would be a good idea.
Dorell?
Yep, go ahead, Mel.
It appears to me that I think May is a critical month of trying to get a rack together, but waiting. I think we get into June, there's another, another month is pretty critical right now. And I think it's going to open up things quite a bit. So I think we, I think we're looking ahead would be probably thirty days from now into the month of June and not get too untangled right now. It's still kind of complicated, most of the May.
Yes, and social distancing is recommended and required. So just, we have a little more time. Okay. Anything else, Michael?
I don't, you want to, might want to check with Commissioner Maybe though. I've had him muted off and on and he's on his phone, so I'm not sure if he knew how to unmute, so.
Is he still here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Every once in a while, yeah, no, I've, I've, it's been perfectly fine most of the time. But every once in a while, the phone connection seems to break up.
Okay. All right. So moving on to commissioner comments, Melissa?
First to respond to you, Michael, I think that a Zoom, a Zoom commissioner listening session sounds like a fine idea. Okay, my first, this is like housekeeping, I feel like, topics. But did you all get the email from Jenny Joellen about Aspen and the Not in Our Town Livingston? Like the Not in Our Town chapter that Aspen's forming a Livingston chapter? So she invited us to participate. And also the city, it sounds like there's a lot of, what's the word? Like it's very helpful when local electeds and members from the police force attend these chapters. I don't know what the capacity of city staff is, but I wanted to bring it up mission to see if there was interest in somebody staying in touch in regards to this group.
Um, I haven't replied to her, but I was going to. I'm interested just as an individual commissioner.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we needed to do anything, if we could respond individually or what your take was on that either.
I'd have to look into it personally. I haven't had that work behind it yet.
Well, maybe we could just.
That just came today, right? That email?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't even had a chance to read it, so.
So maybe we can just talk about it at the next commissioner comments or something and see after everybody's had time to process. And Michael, also I can forward it to you since they did mention, she did mention police, and that's obviously not our jurisdiction. But I can forward it to you so you have information about what she's talking about.
That would be great. And just from a staff point of view, Courtney's actually on the board at Aspen, so we should be able to keep that.
Oh, great. Oh, that's great. Okay. And the second thing on my list was, so I know you're doing, Michael, the Facebook updates on COVID and data. And there was an article that came out last week about how the wastewater treatment plant is able to also be another source of data in regards to COVID-19. And there was this letter to the editor in today's paper about this topic. And there's some interesting questions in it. I don't, I don't know if you just want to wrap those into your Friday live when you answer questions. But I think there's some good questions about, questions about how the data is used. And I know some of it's for the health department, which isn't you. But it could be a good time to answer some questions since this is the week of talking about that. So I wanted to draw your attention. Do you think you'll be able to answer those on Friday during your live?
I haven't seen the, the paper yet today, but I'll take a look at it. Thursday is actually the day where we were going to post the, basically the graph of the results from the wastewater treatment and analysis. So tomorrow's, tomorrow's article will be on the state data overall. And then Thursday will be specifically on the wastewater analysis. So I might be able to answer some of those in that. And then Friday live, if there's any remaining questions, we should be able to answer them then.
And what time are you going live on Friday?
We are staying consistent all week, so the new posts go out at eleven and the Facebook live will be at eleven.
So eleven AM on the city Facebook page. And how long is it scheduled for? How long will you be entertaining questions?
I'm hoping to entertain questions and people don't have anymore. But we'll, we can go at least an hour to an hour and a half if people have that many questions.
And will it be you, Michael Cardus?
It will be me.
Okay. That's great. I just think it's good for people to know their interest at you direct. So thank you for doing that also. I think it's great that you're putting some information out there from the city on it because you have information to share. So thank you for doing that. My third question, we already talked about with board meetings. Oh, I was going to ask you though, for the growth policy, Michael, do, there was going to be a draft of the initial findings that was coming out, I believe, late spring or early summer. Do you know what the status is or will we find out tomorrow?
I will find out tomorrow. That's one of the topics for tomorrow. Let's see where we are in that process and then see how we need to alter our plan according to how COVID-19 is affecting us right now.
Okay. And we'll just send an email to the commission and the planning board or something like that?
Yep, we'll send out an email update once we get it all done. Probably to the commission, the planning board and, and also our listserv for people that have signed up for that.
Thank you so much for doing that. That'll be great to hear because I have gotten some questions specifically about the growth policy. The last thing on my list right now, oh, you know, I remember in your evaluations and different things, we've, you've talked about recognizing employees. And I wonder for the public works week, are you planning to do any like public recognition of public work staff during that week? Like the public works team?
We might do, well, this year it kind of got overtaken by the Facebook informational posts because we usually do it on Facebook. But we'll probably do something in the actual week that we just designated as far as recognition goes.
Thank you. I think that'll be great. Because those are really our frontline year round. Doesn't matter on the weather or the, it doesn't matter what's happening in the world. Those are the people that seem like they keep having to come into work no matter what. They can't work remotely, most of them. So I think that'll be really great and timely to recognize the work that they're doing during this very strange time of the world. I don't have any other city related comments. I just want to thank everybody that's, just thank our community. Our community continues to be kind and I think trying really hard to be compassionate towards each other and all the different places that we come from on the spectrum. And it just makes me glad to live in Livingston. And thanks again to the, I can't emphasize how much I want to thank the school board and the school administrators and the teachers because it continues to just be a roller coaster, I think, of teachers having to figure out how to teach in a new way and it's unprecedented. So thanks to all those people that are working so hard to meet the needs of our kids. And I yield.
I have, I was asked a question today totally off topic from anything so far. And that was about the, the naming of buildings and trails and parks. That was handed off to the Parks and Trails Committee or was it a different board?
As far as parks and trails and, I think just parks and trails, ball fields, that kind of thing. That was all handed off to the Parks and Trails Board.
And buildings?
To this point, we haven't named any buildings after anyone. And I don't know if we're looking at doing that currently. That hasn't been handed off to anyone right now because we don't have any plans to do so. If we want to, that's another committee we could form.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Warren. Mel?
Yeah, I'm excited this week. Friday I'm getting a haircut. And that's a big deal. Michael, I wondered if there's any comment on the new motel that's being built, what the status is?
Sure. So actually Jim Woodall and Ken McInnis are fire chief. We're just out there today doing a final inspection on the fire suppression system, which passed with no problems. Most of the upper floors are actually pretty much done, carpeting, furniture is going in, the whole bit. Right now, they are still looking at a June fifteenth opening date is what their goal is. But as far as the city is concerned, they're on track to meet all of our requirements. They've met their plans to the letter so far. So it's going well and they're hoping to open up by mid-June.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Mel. Quentin?
I, I don't have anything more to say than that Melissa already touched on. You just need to be vigilant, wear your mask, people. I went to Costco today and their policy is you don't get in unless you're wearing a mask and they offer you a mask if you want to go in. So we're not over this by any means. So anyway, I just want to make sure people don't get compli, and stay vigilant and stay safe. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with that. Please stay safe. We had one of our former community members die from COVID. So it did impact us and it's not just in New York City. We want to make sure that we all stay safe. Another thing is I do want to thank the, the city as well for working with the schools and thinking ahead for how to program for summer activities. And yet keeping kids safe, it's, you know, it's a real fine line and a balance that we have to find on giving people opportunities for recreation, yet keeping people safe. So I know that the city's been working hard and been in communication with the schools as to times and options. Also exciting, I'm glad I, I get to share it and no one else has said it yet. But we had a call from Cassandra, a captain for the Montana National Guard. And if you haven't seen it posted, but they are doing a flyover on Wednesday at one-ten here through Livingston. Or it will come from the east to the west. And the plan, if I'm saying it correctly, and is that they're coming from Great Falls and they're flying to Billings. There's two fighter jets flying to Billings. And they split off and one jet goes to the east and one comes to the west. And so ours is coming from east to west over Livingston and then over to Bozeman. And in it, it is their show or one of the shows of support for the health workers and the communities and cities that are working hard to fight COVID-19 and keep people safe. So the flyover is at one-ten on Wednesday. And it was fun talking to Cassandra because she was a kick. It was awesome. Then I passed it to Michael and he took over and got it done super fast. So thank you. Other than that, stay safe, everyone. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in.
Aye.
All opposed. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at six-thirty-nine.
Thank you.
Bye, all.
Bye.
Bye-bye.